Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this work session for August 6, 2024 to order. If you can please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and Salute to the State Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the ZSM of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Moving on to the next item is approval of the work session agenda.
We have approval.
So motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Edwards. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public input. Do we have anyone for public input? Okay, no one for public input. Moving on to next item on the agenda is going to be presentations. Just to let everyone know, out of the respect for the public and people viewing, we're going to start keeping these presentations down to 20 minutes. Christie's going to go ahead and time it. So before you, before 19 or 18 minutes, I'll let you know you have two minutes after that. We'll be done and move on to our next presentation. Okay. So first presentation on the agenda is going to be Boutique Air.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Atan.
Is the microphone not?
Oh. Hello? Check.
There you go. There you go.
Good morning. My name is Atan Spiegel. I'm the VP of Operations Planning at Boutique Air, and this is Nadine.
Nadine, Director of Operations Boutique Air, six years with the company now. Thanks for the opportunity to be here.
All right. Just give me a minute to get used to this. Let's keep it brief. All right, so purpose of our presentation is to present what we are proposing for our central air service that we are aiming to provide for Silver City at the Grant County Airport. So just a little bit of background about Boutique Air. The company started in 2009. Our aim is to provide reliable daily air service in EAS communities. We have about 100 employees right now, as well as a separate rental car division that can be part of any service in any EAS community where there is no independent rental car service already. We have a focus on safety, reliability, customer service, and proprietary technology used to make our operation run as smoothly as possible. And we also have charter operations as well. You can contact us charter our flights. It's very reasonable by today's standards, anyway. Let's talk about the aircraft that we're proposing. It's the Pilatus PC-12. It's a modern design. It's a modern aircraft, pressurized, climate-controlled, air-conditioned, in production, immediate availability, parts are very available. And it cruises around 300 miles an hour. And just take a look at the interior. It is an Executive eight plus two commuter seats in the back. We also have available an Executive nine configuration, but we're still working on that. That's not, that's much easier said than done, but we are working on it. We also have a TSA-compliant storage space in the back. Of course, without TSA here, that won't strictly be necessary to have, but should you ever like to have TSA in the future, we are ready. We are also, there is also an enclosed lavatory as well for privacy and comfort. We have two options as part of our proposal. So first option is 24-weekly round trips to Albuquerque. Makes for just under 2,500 total flights scheduled and 22,500 total passenger seats available. And that's based on nine seats, as I said. With eight seats, it would be around 18,000. Required subsidy for this option is $4.39 million, and that is to sort of make up for the lack of economies of scale in the EAS program as a whole. We do think that passenger traffic and growth is very good in the Silver City market. We do want to put that forward. The second option that we're proposing, frankly, the one we are more interested in talking about, and I think you'd be more interested in as well, is more closely mirroring what you have now and what we had offered in the past, which is 18 weekly round trips to Albuquerque and six weekly round trips to Phoenix. And I do want to stress that per this option, we can, at our own whim and at the whim of the county and the market, increase service to Phoenix up to 12 round trips a week. That's two flights every day, six days a week, or five days a week and then one flight on two days, whatever you like. That's what we can do. We have a lot of flexibility with how we bid this, and the DOT has awarded this kind of bid before. This is what we're doing in Pendleton as well, with Portland and Seattle. And so it's the same passenger numbers, flights available. The subsidy is a little bit higher because we have to have another station in Phoenix because we are going so-called non-starrel without TSA. We have to buy fuel from a third-party vendor instead of the main vendor at Phoenix. The same goes for Albuquerque, but with the less volume, it's harder to get those same sort of deals. And so the subsidy is necessarily slightly higher.
Can I clarify something?
Yes, absolutely.
Your analysis shows that eight trips to Albuquerque, is that supposed to say Phoenix? Or 16 to Albuquerque?
Yeah, there's got to be, there's got to be a mistake somewhere. Yes, that is supposed to be eight to Phoenix and 16 to Albuquerque. That's right. So based on current passenger trends, if you shifted one Albuquerque flight to Phoenix, your load factor would even out to 58% on all flights. That's in theory. In practice, it won't be exactly that, but it is interesting that they are within .1% of each other.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah. So I just have some sample flight schedules for you to show what we can do, basically, if we like, if you like. So this is with minimal service to Phoenix. If your, if your market really wants to go to Albuquerque, which I'm told people like going to Albuquerque from here, people's doctors are in Albuquerque, there's wonderful medicine and professional services available in Albuquerque, and Phoenix, of course. But this gives you basically the ability to day trip to Albuquerque as well as take midday flights, basically, most days of the week. And of course, you still get that service to Phoenix if you want to go to, you know, Spain or something, or was it London? I have a map later. Yeah. This is with the most service to Phoenix. So you have ability to day trip to both, basically, on most days of the week. There is going to be a concession on one days of the week, so the days that people typically don't want to fly are going to be Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday. I know it's a special case here because, as I'm told, the market here is more interested in doing these day trips and seeking professional services in these larger cities. And these are just sample schedules. We don't have to abide by this. If we find that the market wants something else, we are very, very flexible. You know, we want to fit the schedule the market wants, not the other way around. And just finally, this is what we were more interested in doing based on just current passenger trends. This, I feel, is a very ambitious and interesting and uneven schedule to really stimulate that passenger growth and make as many available seats as possible to those seeking them for those professional services and also for any leisure travelers as well on those Sunday flights and Friday flights. Let's talk a little bit about what we have to offer in terms of our reliability. So we were not always perfect, and we're not going to pretend we were. 2022, we were at about 96% controllable completion. Those days are basically gone now. We have smoothed things out great. We're on a new maintenance program with our planes that really improve our reliability and more closely mirror the more stringent requirements that private operators would abide by. Like I said, we're a charter operator too. Can't really have charter flights breaking down, definitely can't have EAS flights breaking down. And I'll mention it in a second later, but while we do, while we will do charter, our scheduled service will always take priority. So yeah, we are basically 99.68 2023, 99.73 in 2024. We are smooth sailing. So what do we want to do with our service to Grand County Airport, Silver City? Well, we want to get to 70% load factor. We think that's a pretty reasonable target to achieve because that is basically the target capacity that all air carriers need to basically break even on passenger fares alone in their own hubs, right? And so how do you, how do you get there? Well, there's really four, four things you need. You need reliable service, which we, we'll talk more about how we plan to get there. Talk about affordable fares, right? So we don't want fares to get in the way from people using our service to seek out professional services, to take vacations that they need, right? And so we also offer a voucher program as well. So, you know, fares can vary. You know, here I said 49 to 149. We don't know that we're going to be charging 149. I don't really want people paying 149 on a government subsidized service. So you can also purchase vouchers to get basically assured pricing. It's a little bit lower than your bare fare, but it always, it is always guaranteed at that price, and you can redeem them on any fixed route for that voucher. We also want to have robust marketing to promote the service. Oftentimes, we go to these communities and people don't even know about the airport, and that's really strange. Our, you know, should absolutely be promoting it. We have this wonderful service here that's not that cheap for the federal government, and people really should be taking advantage of it to make it worth it. And then last is quality customer service. Those are the things you need. Hmm. Well, that slide is a little bit messed up somehow. But we are available on all the major global distribution systems. That's what that's supposed to say. So Sabre, Amadeus Travelport, and ITA. So that puts us in a position where we are, we have great distribution. People can find us. People can purchase tickets on Boutique Air through third-party travel agencies like Travelocity, Expedia, Hotwire, Cheapo, Air, you name it. They can also book on Google as well. That's through ITA. And also European travelers who want to come to Silver City from Europe or to Europe, it's very easy for them to link into the global distribution system, and that's through Amadeus. And Sabre is the American standard. If you have any questions on that, I'll answer them in a bit. So we have a couple of interline partnerships that we want to tell you about. So we've been partnered with United Airlines. When we were here last, we were also partnered with United Airlines. Admittedly, not the most powerful tool to be using out of Albuquerque or Phoenix, but we have something now that we may or may not have had right at the end when we were here last, which is an American Airlines interline agreement, which started in December 2018. And so you can see, like, if you want to fly to Messina, which is a community we serve right now, if you want to go from Messina to Miami, you can book it all on AA.com. Very easy. All one itinerary, and your baggage shows up there. Just, just like that. Not by magic, it takes work, but, you know, we do that. And just to, you know, prove, you know, show that American is an interesting tool here, Phoenix is a huge hub for American, and you can really get a lot of places just in one stop from here with just one stop in Phoenix. You can go all the way to Hawaii, you can go all the way to the UK, just in one stop. And so that's something that we have now that we didn't have before, and we're really excited to tell you about, of course. So our marketing director couldn't be here today, so I will try to talk a little bit about what we want to do for marketing our service. So we have a $50,000 budget for marketing our service. And, you know, previous norms have been $20,000, and that's just not the case anymore. Everybody is putting in really truly tremendous resources, and I think that's important because clearly $20,000 wasn't working, whatever people were doing before. Like I said, we go to these communities and people just don't know. They don't know about the airport, and that's, to me, that's crazy. All right, so we plan to do social media ad buys, Facebook, Instagram. You know, it's not that hard to do. You can time it very well such that you can market specific demographics or for specific events. We want to do radio advertising, billboard advertising even, experiential. So if you have local events, maybe Little League softball events, you know, we are happy to sponsor them, right? There's a mobile ad, just an example. It's actually, this picture is just AI-generated, but, you know, it gets, it gets the point across, right? And I, and I know that a lot of EAS carriers are now getting really into this, and I think that's really great. There's a billboard advertisement, you know, put that up along, put that up along Highway 90 or something, you know? So something experiential. We just sponsored the Wild West Beer Fest. Not the most child-friendly event, but it was fun. We both went. It was a good time. People like flying boutique. These are our positive reviews that we're, you know, showing you. This guy, John Stein, John Stein or Jason Stein? Well, the Steins really like us. I think you have a town called Stein. I'm sure they'll love us. Steins? Steins, right? Yeah, I'm sure they'll love it. So we are mobile friendly. There's, yep, boarding, we do mobile boarding pass, TSA pre-check, all of that. We're integrating to all of that. So now I'll leave it to Nadine, our Director of Operations, who is responsible for our great reliability, to talk about how we got there.
Yeah. So the goal, having essential service to be reliable and, you know, having great service, of course. Multiple ways to achieve this goal is, there's four factors, main factors. We'll start with having the enough plane to serve the community. I doubt one or two planes enough to, to achieve these goals. So you need to have the right numbers. You need to have spare planes, and our goal here is to have backup planes in every base. So in Phoenix, we'll have one. In Albuquerque, we have one, and we'll have an extra one in Silver City. That's for the plane. Now, for maintenance, that's the second point, is you have to have a backup or support, actually, for your, your planes. Planes need inspections. They need service. So having maintenance in each base, it's very important to support the operation and to keep it successful. An example, in Phoenix, we use cutter, we use other maintenance shops do. We're happy to have any maintenance in this area here to work with them, or if you guys have facilities, we can take them, train them, and they can help us have down the road. That's second point. Third point, pilots, you need to have the right numbers. There was a time that there was a big problem with pilot shortage all over the US. I think that problem is already solved nowadays. The pilots stay more in the, with the companies. I think the turn rate is way low. And our pilots, they stay longer, they like the company, they like the culture, and they go for two-years contract at least minimum here.
Another time.
Two more minutes?
Two minutes.
I'm trying to rush as much as I can. Customer service, of course, that's very, very important factor too. If you have issues, let's say a flight canceled or for a reason you have an issue, we're facing some problems, you definitely need support. And this is, I, I would say this is very, very important factor to have support. We have 24-hour support, and we have live chat on our website. We do have a big team that, that support the operation 24 hours. That's briefly here. Okay, and we mentioned mobile boarding passes, we have wheelchair services, luggage, flights for free, so we don't charge anything for any luggage. Doesn't matter, we don't have any weight limits. We do have beverages and snacks onboard. And what else? This is our technology that we use. We do have a live flight status, basically. You can go online right now and check our flight status. I think that we're, we're kind of the only airline that we do that in a central service world. It's very, very great technology to have. You can see the live updates.
SMS as well. You can get text messages, too.
Yeah. So operation technology, we just want to show you here very quickly what, I mean, it's one slide. We have great technology. We use Flight Ops to, to follow all the operations, basically, day, on daily basis. That, that will keep us safe, to not break any rules there. Yeah, that's, I don't know how much time we have, but...
Yeah, also for people seeking professional services, I will just say about eight months ago, I got a call from a distressed passenger one day. We got a big delay fueling in Portland one time, and she needed some vouchers. So of course I generated the vouchers, but I also took it upon myself to go to Angel Flight and say, we don't want passengers paying for flights if they're ambulatory, but they need cancer treatments or things like that. So we will work with Angel Flight. Admittedly, we haven't worked with Angel Flight Central yet. They're actually three different divisions, but we work with East and West right now. So I would say that's something we do.
And just as you mentioned, we have a rental car service that we can bring to the Silver City if you guys need it.
Yeah, at the airport, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, we're open for questions. I mean, the rest is just...
Thank you.
Skip it. We don't have much time.
Commissioner, do you have any questions? You know, my biggest, I guess, question or is customer service. You know, if, you know, I understand flights can be canceled because of mechanical weather. I understand those things, but what I'm looking for is if we sit up here as a board of commissioners, advocate, or send a recommendations letter for a company, I would expect that somebody there at the front counter, not through email, you know, sit there and help them figure out what their next thing. A lot of these people that are flying are headed to meetings. We don't want them to be renting cars to get back or get to the meetings or change plans. And so my biggest thing is customer service, and will you have somebody there that can answer these questions? Not through email, not through phone, answer the questions in the system, getting up to where they need to or back, you know, as soon as possible?
Yeah, if it's during work hours, they're there, for sure. Like, oh, sorry. If it's during operations hours at the airport here, there will be somebody there, for sure. Yeah, I mean, if the flight is canceled, we don't just send, we don't just send the CSA home. They, they have more work to do.
We're, we're basically 24 hours available. I'm Director of Operations, and I work seven days a week. I don't take any days off, to be honest.
They could talk to a person right there to help them figure their schedule.
Absolutely. This is the numbers you have, and I'm literally available 24 hours. You can, you guys, I mean, no matter what I say, it's, it's good maybe to contact other communities and talk to them about that. We're, we're basically available to answer any emails or phone numbers anytime.
And more specifically to your point, if the flight is canceled, well, the plane's there, pilots are there, CSA is there, and they are there to help. Our, our agents are cross-trained to do both, you know, both reservations help and also do the ground handling for our, our planes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you guys for your presentation.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the opportunity.
Yes.
Moving on to our next presentation, it's Advanced Stair.
Thank you, Commissioners and County staff, for your time. I know that most of you know me. I'm Barbara Hunt, the VP of Business Operations for Advanced Stair. And as you know, we were here just a little over a month ago and did a full presentation and a community town hall. So I'm not going to put you through all of that again. I just wanted to be here to tell you, we are very much committed to this community, as I think we've evidenced. Over the six years that we've been here, we have a 99% reliability and a 95% on-time performance. Also, when we were here last time, we had just put out a survey to passengers. We had over 1,400 responses to that survey and a 4.8-star rating. Out of the 1,408 that responded, we had 30 people that were, had something unhappy to say about us, and we responded to each one of those individually. I also wanted to let you know how we got here, just as a funny note. Our flights were full coming out of Albuquerque and Phoenix, so we, as employees, did not get to fly on our flights. We went commercially to El Paso and drove. So that's also a good sign of how our performance has been in this community. And we just want to let you know, we're, we're committed to this, and we're ready to serve you for the next four years. I'm here to answer any questions about our bid proposal or anything that you want to ask. Thank you.
Questions, Commissioner?
No, thanks for being here. I appreciate that. But I have no question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is Director Reports. So first report will be from our emergency manager, Mr. Fuller.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioner, how are you doing? I'll be brief. Not a whole lot is earth-shattering has happened in the last month or so, but finished up, closed out the FY '23 EMPG grant. Hazard mitigation plan revision update is rolling along like it should be. I completed all the risk assessment documents, and they were submitted to H2O Partners. Had, had some trouble with the town of Hurley, hasn't submitted all their stuff yet, but that's the only kind of roadblock we've had so far with, with the plan. Got the, got, I got approved to spend the money from the New Mexico counties for the hazard, for the wildfire hazard outreach program. So my thought process is kind of wait till after the first of the year before we start pushing the ready, set, go out to the community. Fire season's kind of coming to an end right now, so I think it'd be better if we wait till like February and start doing a big push out with the information then. I think it'd be a whole lot more beneficial to the community. Still waiting on the award, the money for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan from the Community Wildfire Defense Grant from the state. Still waiting that, and still waiting some notice from the Shishkrap funding and the, the grant I put in for the, the generators for the convention center. Still waiting on to get a word back from FEMA. They're not the most quickest, the most responsive agency sometimes. They can take a while. On a different note, worked with Adam over here to have access to the county website to put public notices, emergency notices, and notifications out to the community on a 24/7 basis. And I've also gotten access now to the official county Facebook page to put notifications out there and public notices and safety messages out on a 24/7 basis. I've really never been on social media in my life, so I think with the help from Brian, hoping this old dog can learn a few new tricks. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you.
Just on a note, Chief Rose is off on a fire at the Silverback Towing Junkyard.
Our son, as I was doing here.
Yes. Hopefully, they got the most of it knocked down. It was an abandoned trailer on premise, so. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next report will be cut from Airport. Rebecca?
Our briefing today is just, we finished our annual FAA inspection. They were here from July 29th through the 31st. Some of the takeaways, we'd had a markings issue on our taxiway. We completed the work on that the week before they got here. Yay, go team. And that was passed, and that has been taken off of our discrepancy list. We did have one record-keeping violation. We had one individual that missed training by three weeks. That one was also considered to be taken care of. We've invested in doing a training tracking program, and our administrative help has actually entered all of our training so that the guys are getting notified now a month in advance of when it's due. So I don't foresee that being an issue in the future. We will need to be doing some seal cracking or crack sealing on our taxiway, and we're working with a vendor right now to try to get a price on that and come up with a plan. Hopefully, the state will be able to step up and help us with funding to get that one completed. And then our taxiway reflectors have been an issue for quite a while. Our sun has basically eaten half of the color off of them, and so we have a project underway right now. It's being designed that we're actually going to have LED lighting on our taxiway, but that won't happen until next fiscal year. So I've proposed getting some reflective blue tape, and I'm going to try to sell it to them so that that can hold us over. They won't allow us to change the ones that are not reflective anymore if they don't match every other one, and there are more than 400 of them out there. So it's just not economically at over $100 apiece. are more than 400 of them out there. So it's just not economically at over $100 apiece. So if they don't look identical, they can't be on the airfield. And so I'm hoping that they'll have a little bit of reasonableness and agree with us on this. And then our ARF program is actually going incredibly well with Chief Groves, and we have three other people that are fully certified through DFW. They were all on site and they just did a fantastic job with our ARF response. We have a timed three-minute response. The guys were there in a minute 15 seconds. I mean, it just, they knew the truck, they knew the equipment, and it was just really impressive. And so they really called that out. So stand for any questions?
Commissioner?
Does that mean you're going to have to put reflective tape on all 400 of those?
No, fortunately, honestly, we're probably looking at about 30% of them. So yeah, it'll be a project, but it's still going to be a heck of a lot cheaper than, you know, for a nine-month period. I mean, we've known this has been an issue and, and we've kind of rolled with it, but this time it just became top of the list. So.
Well, I just mostly want to just say that congratulations on the ARF program working so well. And you guys are doing amazing things out at the airport. We really appreciate you and your staff. Thank you so much.
We have a great crew out there. I just can't say enough about them.
Thank you. Moving on to County Fleet Maintenance, Mr. White.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. For July, we did 23 oil changes and inspections. We did 38 diagnosis and repairs. Eight units had tires repaired or replaced. Five blades had cutting edges replaced. Three windshields were replaced in July. We sent the veteran van out for warranty for an electrical drain. That's been resolved. The Origami Insurance Survey has been submitted for August. We've got the new blade operator pickups that are going to be going into service soon. Now we're just waiting for radios to be installed in them. The off-road diesel tank, requested the PO for that certification and that alarm upgrade on it. And then we still have those two quotes for the service trucks to be replaced and a drive-on lift. And then we're going to continue moving obsolete units through auction, so you'll be seeing those deletion requests. Continue cost analysis of the CVA agreements with Wagner on heavy equipment. We've got a meeting Friday with Wagner to discuss service options with them. Stand for any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next report via maintenance, Mr. Locke.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the maintenance briefings, current projects, manager's office break crew remodel. We are about 50, 60% completed with that. So you'll get to see the new countertops and cabinets in there. Needed a, a facelift for how long it's been in there. Also at the courthouse, first and second floor hallway, patch and paint. Since we had the fire alarms installed, we had to take some things down. And so we took this opportunity to patch the holes in the walls and also give it a new facelift for some paint. So it's looking really nice there. We did some stuff at the fairgrounds, exterior light upgrade. We're doing 14 of those lights on the hog barn. We are also at the courthouse conference center and admin building parking lots. We've been doing the curb touch-up and repainting of the lot lines. So if you notice this building out here in the admin building, our staff has gone through and Macario's done a great job of re-putting those lines up. And at the road department and the fleet shop, we did an extensive waterline addition for swamp coolers and multiple bays to keep those guys cool down there. As for future projects, replacing all of our sanitary fixtures in the administration building and trying to come up with a holding cell design and a possible install at the courthouse. Stand for any questions for the maintenance side of things?
Yeah, thanks, Jason. What's the status of the work at the Silver Street offices?
So we're waiting for the final design of surveys for the water flows and trying to get the elevations correct over there to make sure the water is directed away from the building. So had some people take some vacation that were planned there. And so all that's up behind us now. So we're going to start pouring concrete and getting that knocked out. It's going to be about three phases there. First phase is going to be the north side. Second phase will be the dispatch side towards the, towards the pool. And then our third phase will be in the back area. So we're.
So you're looking at a couple months?
I'm thinking, we were, we were talking about 60 days out probably right now to get it. And that's our timeframe for trying to get the asphalt in while it's still hot enough to, to pave. So.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Road Department, yours?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the road department briefing. So our current finished projects, the Noonday LGRF project is 85% complete. We have a little bit more of concrete to pour out there for the footings for the low-water crossing. And then all we will need to complete that is hauling some material out there and putting in the road, and then we'll be able to, to get that one off the books. Routine blading of roads is ongoing with the moisture that we've received. And we're concentrating on the school bus routes as of when this report was done. In District One, several washouts with Bear Creek. It's been the problem area all month long. We've, we've taken about 150 tons of material in there and hauled it in, and the guys down there at the road department have done a great job in keeping that maintained. Under District Two, the Norris Road has been the problem area, has been bladed a few times, and this road has 13 crossings in it. So every time we get a monsoon rain, it takes, it takes a while to go down through there and get that stuff done. Under District Three, it's had the most moisture and has had the most washouts. So kind of just been all over District Three doing things there. District Four, we've had minimal issues. The Red Rock area, all those roads have been bladed and are maintained very well. District Six, the CPAR Fi-10 has been bladed multiple times to keep up with the continuous power line traffic. And we've started, started doing the mowing of the roadways, and we're full force now since we've received the moisture and we won't have to worry about the, any sparks, things happening like that, some fires on the roadways. Also key event dates, we are trying to aim for an August 26th through the 30th, the chip ceiling of Ridge Road, Kirkland, and Flurry. That's our 2024 LGRF funding. We're just waiting on some, some confirmations on oil and things like that that we can get delivered. And that concludes my report. Stand for questions?
Commissioner?
So I just want to thank you and Tommy for meeting with me out at the plumbing tank low-water crossing and giving me more education on low-water crossings than I had prior to that meeting. It was very helpful. And I've gotten a lot of positive response from the residents who the email went out to, and they did a good job of passing the email around to other residents. So I think that was really helpful. Really appreciate your time on doing that. I always appreciate your photographs. And one addition that I'd like to see, if you wouldn't mind, is a map of the districts.
Okay.
In writing, this doesn't really mean much to me about where those districts are. It would be great to have a visual.
Okay.
Thanks, Jason.
And one last thing I would like to add before I move on is I'd like to introduce Joseph Hoagie. He's our Capital Projects Manager. So he's, this is his second day on the job. So you guys have seen him. He's, he's worked at Western and for a lot of years. And I'll, I'll let Joseph talk to you.
Mr. Chair members, the commission members, just want to say thank you for the warm welcome. Everybody at the county's been extremely wonderful so far. Really positive environment. I look forward to serving the community and contributing the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome on board.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just to clarify that, because I don't know the districts, the Bear Creek washouts, those are on 211 going into Hila?
No, no, no. No, these are the. It's in Pino Saltos.
So that's why I was trying to picture, besides the bridge, what roads have we got, I guess, down below where it meets up with 15?
So there also, when you're in, when you're in actual, the, like, if you go by the Buckhorn, the road is, goes through Bear Creek over there where you had that big fire. And so we've had a lot of runoff from that in the last couple of years since we had that fire there. Can't recall what that fire name was. Not the.
Okay. It's hard for me to picture 150 tons.
It is, me too.
There. I guess I could picture it, you know, down when it hits Hila by that time.
Yeah. If you'd like someday, we could go for a, we can go for a drive and I can show you.
Yeah? Okay. I'll contact you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Anything else or something?
That's it. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss anybody? Mr. Adam?
No.
We're good. Okay. So yours, County Manager?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have the backer final agenda in front of you. We have the regular Hila Regional Medical Center report. Mr. Whitaker will be here to give his monthly report. Under Presentations, we would like to formally recognize Rebecca Winger for her being named the Airport Manager of the Year for the State of New Mexico. You have several sets of minutes for your review prior to the meeting and for your approval. And moving on to Financial Reports, Item F, Consideration of Expenditure Report dated July 30th, 2024. Are you doing that, Robert, or do you want me to? I got it. I got it. So for the period ending July 30th, 2024, we have AP checks in the amount of $2,431,839. And we have payroll checks totaling $572,006 for a grand total of, which I mentioned, 3 million, $3,300,846. And also included in this report is all of the checks per year request for $10,000 and over. Be happy to answer any questions you might have on those?
No.
Okay. Next, moving on to New Business, Item G, Consideration of Letter to the U.S. Department of Transportation Regarding Comments on Essential Air Service Proposal. Rebecca has drafted this letter on your behalf based on her recommendation on staff recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions or open to discussion if that's not the direction you're intending. We're open for your suggestions and comments. I guess the letter's not in there.
Yeah, the letter's not in here.
We do have an email from the 17th, but not the letter itself.
So we'll email that to you. Rebecca's, Rebecca's recommendation, I'll just tell you what the letter says. Rebecca's recommendation is to continue with Advanced Stair, and she's also recommending a four-year, a four-year contract. And it's a letter discussing all of the positive contributions and the, her ability to work with Advance and their performance out of our airport. But we'll have that email to you today. Sorry, I thought it wasn't in the back.
What's, what's the least number of years we can go on, on a contract? Four years, I mean.
Two.
Two. And I, I, you know, just being honest and transparent, four years sometimes is just a little too much. And where do we get there? Are things going to improve? Are things just going to, well, we have four years? That's my concern with that. But go ahead and send the email and we'll consider, I'll consider that four year. I'd prefer something a little lower, but I don't know how my fellow commissioners feel about this also.
Yeah. I guess I'm curious if we can discuss it on Thursday. But I've been, I've been very pleased with their work. And I think you've mentioned a couple of things you've heard that weren't so pleasing. So you could bring those to our attention. That'd be great. Otherwise, I'd be inclined to accept the airport manager's recommendation because I think they've done a great job. There were a few things in, in Boutique's presentation that, that I appreciated. But we've had such a good experience so far with the deals that I wouldn't want to cut them off.
You've always done two-year agreements in the past, is that correct?
Yes.
See, and that's what I'm afraid of. Four years, you know, I'm.
Too much rope?
Too much rope, yeah, exactly. And is there anything that, you know, if we start discussing or we start having issues, I don't like to be locked into four years, you know? So that's my opinion. We can discuss it for the Thursday.
And I'll make sure that we have Rebecca's left, but have Rebecca here on Thursday to be able to articulate her, her reasoning for both.
Okay.
Next, Item H, Consideration of Fiscal Year 25 Asset Deletion and Transfer Request, Number Two. Rebecca? Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. We have two items that we are going to put up for auction. We have a 2005 Dodge Dakota from the Road Department and a John Deere tractor from the Maintenance Department. Can I stand for any questions?
Remind me where that auction takes place.
Uh, we have an online website that we use called GovDeals, and so it's all uploaded on there.
By county?
I'm sorry?
I can go to Grant County and see those things, correct?
On GovAuction, can you search for Grant?
Oh, I see. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
You're nodding my head with me? Come on.
Yes, you can search for Grant County.
But if one wants to inspect the actual vehicles, can that be done here? Do they have to go to, there was a time when, I feel like you had to go to cruises for that.
To, uh, so they have to come here to pick up the vehicle, inspect it, anything like that.
Not that I'm knitting, in case anybody's listening.
Mr. Chairman, we, we used to take our vehicles to most cruises or to deming for auctions at, at. Every few months, but we've found that we have a better response and actually receiving higher, higher amounts for our disposed vehicles by doing it this way. And it's easier for the staff and quicker and a little more professional.
Fabulous.
All good.
All good.
Just thank you. I know we're, we're making headway. Thanks for having done all this stuff that we have, cleaning up our yards. You know, my thing is we're being critical of others, so let's take care of our business also. Thank you.
Next, moving on to Agreements, Item I, Consideration of Agreement A 2432. This is an MOU with the New Mexico Department of Health, providing suitable quarters for local public health offices. Recently, the Department of Health reached out to all of the county managers requesting an MOU regarding the counties providing locations and for public health offices, which is called out in statute. We're required to do such. They did not provide any draft MOU that they wanted us to consider. They just asked that we, they're trying to make sure that there's an agreement with each county. So this, this MOU, basically all it does is it's, it is right in line with what state statute requires us to provide. And that's all that we should be providing. That's another one of those unfunded mandates. And so what this MOU dictates is what is called out in statute. And that would be our recommendation for approval, and then we can provide this to Department of Health. Ben has looked at this and he's fine with the way it's drafted.
Okay with that?
We're good. Maybe not.
So the New Mexico Department of Health doesn't contribute at all to the maintenance of that building, do they? Because I know we're doing a lot over there.
Next, Item J, Consideration of Agreement A 2433. This is the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments 2024-2025 General Member Agreement. This agreement establishes the annual dues This agreement establishes the annual dues, which for the county is $8,159. Also, um, part of the action you will need to take on Thursday is, uh, we need to identify a COG board member and alternate, as well as an Economic Development Board member and alternate. And at this time, I, my recommendation would be to name Andrea Matoya as the COG member, myself as the alternate, and on the Economic Development Board, uh, myself as the member and Andrea as the alternate. We may come back in the future and ask you to make some modifications to that, but for now, that would be our recommendation.
Good recommendation, thank you.
Next, Item K, Consideration of Agreement A 2434 with Lee County to House Detenies. This is to house juvenile, um, juvenile detainees. This is the last agreement that we didn't have in place. There are four juvenile detention facilities open in the state right now. And so with the approval of this agreement, we will have agreements in place with all four. Right now, their, um, their charge per day is 150.
So that says per adult detainee. Is that true for
No.
juveniles also?
Oh, no, it's twice, yeah, for 150 for adults and it's 300 for
It's 300 for juveniles, okay.
So we do have the ability to house both there, but
Okay.
So any questions or concerns on that? We have run into a recent instance where we needed a bed and everyone else was full, so we're trying to expedite this one.
Okay, so one question because it was brought up to me a couple of weeks ago and I think I spoke to you about it. Can we send a letter to these law enforcement agencies or, you know, I don't know how Sheriff feels about this, as far as the agreements we have with these juveniles? So they know or be, just to let them know that these contracts are in place? I know it's probably the detention center, right, that makes arrangements to transport them?
No, the juvenile probation office is the one that makes those arrangements and finds a bed and works with law enforcement to, to transport those juveniles. So it's not our detention center. Unfortunately, we have no say-so where they go, they find a bed and we pay the bill.
Okay, but we can send them a letter, at least JPO, to let them know we have contracts with Boom Boom These?
Yes, so I've, I've been in regular communication with them. I had talked to them and was well aware of the situation that you brought to my attention. And so that was a miscommunication between us and San Juan County. Technically did still have an agreement, we just hadn't approved the, well, actually, we had approved that very day, the new agreement with the new rate. Um, but now we have agreements with all four, which is what they had asked me to do, was make sure that we had agreements with all, all of the juvenile facilities in the state. And just, just a little bit of a side note, county managers are continuing to have conversations with the state about consideration of regional facilities. We're starting to see, I don't know if Sheriff you can help me out here, starting to see an uptick of, of more violent juvenile offenders. And so a lot of times we run into situations where there's not a bed available. And, um, some counties have actually made arrangements out of states and that may have to be an option that we explore in the future. So we are all doing our best, but we're, we're starting to see that uptick. And so we will continue to push those discussions with the state to please start considering regional facilities. There may be counties that had, um, juvenile detention facilities in the past that might be consider, considering opening those again. So we're just starting to see more and more juveniles.
But these won't be contracted, run, right? They'd be
No.
by the entities or the counties in there because I, I don't
Correct.
I don't think I'd even consider having it run by somebody with a contract.
For profit.
You know, in, in for profit, you're right. You know, it's sort of like some of the discussion that has been happening is getting our detention centers, you know, doing regional detention centers. That doesn't work for me. You know, I've been in New Mexican counties and advocate against that. So, no, but I appreciate that and I'm glad they're looking at it.
Any questions on that, Commissioner?
I do have a question, actually. And I'm sure we've talked about this in the past, but I just don't remember the details. So, um, where, where is that juvenile while all of these arrangements are being made? And particularly interested in that, given your comment about the uptick in violent, um, activities. Is that person being held somewhere? Are they at home? They're just out in public? Where are they?
I can't answer that question for you. That's a juvenile probation question, or the Sheriff can probably answer that one. I, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, to answer that question, usually what happens is when we get called to an incident involving a juvenile, if we have to detain them, we bring them here to our facility. We have to, by, by the law, we have to have a certain area to hold them until arrangements are made. A lot of the times, what happens though is they get, if it's not an incident that we get dispatched to, then JPO, when they have a meeting with them or, or do something to either get them detained or whatever, they're, they're at the office with them and then they'll call us to go and get them and then we'll transport from there. So usually the, the, the main dealings we have is that we actually get dispatched to an incident that we have to investigate. But a lot of the times, it's already, they're already there with the JPO's office and getting ordered to be transported.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, Sheriff.
Good question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Next, we'll move on to Resolutions, Item L, Consideration of Resolution R 2437, A Resolution Authorizing a 75% Pickup of Para-Member Contributions. Michelle?
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. This resolution basically states that in years past and years coming, there will be a slight increase in para contributions. And we're talking about about half a percent. And what we're trying to articulate is that the county is picking up 75% of that increase as well.
Does that make sense?
So there's an increase and we're going to pick up 75% of that increase?
We're going to continue to pay 75%. So, um, as Para is trying to shore up, so we have, and we've budgeted those. But, um, Michelle became aware of this in June, that every time there is a percentage increase, we should bring this resolution in front of you. I know. Bring this resolution in front of you. My thoughts exactly, for Sheriff Brown. We should bring this resolution in front of you just so that you've taken official action and making sure that
Continue to
you're continuing to, to pick up that 75%. Some counties have chosen not to, so, but I don't think there's any reason that we can't afford half a percent and continue our full benefit package for employees. That's our recommendation.
Can we put a paragraph that says this applies to future rates as well? So we don't have to do this every time?
I don't see why we couldn't. I think, I think, yes.
Yeah, it makes sense. And then if they want to, if a future commission wants to revoke it, they could revoke it. But that way, they don't have to, Michelle doesn't have to think of it every year and you don't have to think of it every year. I'm in favor of that.
We can amend that and add another where else. Just articulate that it is the commission's desire to continue to pay 75%, including any future increases.
Or decreases.
And that's per contract. Sorry, that's per contract, right? Per, per union contract?
Yeah, it is under a union contract as well.
I think that idea would be great, just to keep it there and when it changes, if it changes down the road, then yeah, it's a good idea.
We'll add an additional where else.
Thanks for bringing that up, Commissioner Brown.
Any other questions or comments on that? Next, Item M, Consideration of Resolution R 2441, Ratifying a Certain Agreement Between Grant County and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, authorizing of the same by the proper official of Grant County. This is the procedure of the COG, um, two-piece. This resolution says that we're agreeing to the services that the COG provides and that we're agreeing to enter into the agreement that we talked about in Item J.
And who came up with that sentence?
Questions, comments? Okay, next, Item N, Consideration of Resolution R 2442. This is adoption of a drug and alcohol policy for DOT safety-sensitive employees. This policy was drafted by Mark Allen, uh, New Mexico County Insurance Authority's legal counsel. And so it was, uh, following his guidance. Both of our contract attorneys, uh, Mr. Young and Ms. Holcomb have both looked at this. I've also provided it to the union president for any comment or concerns. He has per the union contract. And so, um, what this is, is just for DOT safety-sensitive employees and would need your approval to adopt this on Thursday. Stand for any questions or concerns?
And this is pretty much under state law also, right?
At federal law, yes.
Yeah, so, okay.
It says it applies to all employees required to hold a CDL. Is that because all employees who are required to hold a CDL are doing safety-sensitive jobs?
Yes, they are considered safety-sensitive.
If they're required to, okay, interesting.
It's the way the DOT regulations read.
Yeah, okay.
How much, how much difference is there between this policy and our regular drug and alcohol policy?
Not a lot. Um, so of course, our reg, our current policy is extremely outdated. Michelle and I are working on, um, a new workplace policy. What we have decided with the volunteers, um, at this time, we will just continue with post-accident, uh, testing with the volunteers. And, um, but we'll have a workplace, a new workplace drug policy, hopefully, I, hopefully, next month.
Because most of this is just
It's following state and federal law.
Exactly, so, which we should be doing, so. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Yes.
Uh, no.
All right. Next, moving on to Bids and Requests for Proposals, Item O, Consideration of RFP 2501, Juvenile Justice Continuum Coordinator. Veronica?
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. July 11th, we released the RFP for the Juvenile Justice Continuum Coordinator. Uh, the Evaluation Committee met on July 29th and it's my recommendation, along with the Evaluation Committee, it be awarded to Gloria Rose Dermeier. Um, she's been currently running the program for the past two years. The salary for the coordinator about exceeds the 60,000 threshold, so we did have to go over RFP this year. Can I stand for any questions?
Good? Next, Item P, Consideration of, uh, Bid B 2406, Pino South Coast Volunteer Fire Rescue Station, uh, Number Five. Veronica?
Commissioners, Mr. Chair, um, July 22nd, one bid was received. Um, this was a rebid. On our last bid, we got no bids received at all. Um, the bid came in from Classic Industries Incorporated at $1,836,978.80. This project is funded, um, by the loan from the New Mexico Finance Authority for $1,084,911.00. It is the recommendation, myself, the Pino South Coast Fire Chief, and Arch, his architect, that has been being rejected due to budget constraints.
Miss Sharon, Commissioners, um, Veronica and Mr. Placenzio and I met last week to take a look at this. It's, it's our recommendation that, um, the volunteer fire department basically go back and work with their architect and design something. It's a beautiful building, um, but I don't think that beauty is what we're looking for. We're looking for functionality and try to get a little closer to what their budget is. If, you know, this went forward, we would be looking at plus, close to $900,000 supplemental, supplementing this, which, I can't in good conscience recommend, neither can Mr. Placenzio. So, um, we would like for them to go back and, and work with their architect and design something that is functional like the other, uh, fire stations that we see throughout the county. This is just, I, I think it's not feasible at this point.
Excuse me. So the loan fund is $1,084. So, yeah, I think we need to probably keep it around that, that price right there.
We don't typically subsidize stations, right?
We, well, we did some, um, with their last station, um, which had its set of challenges and I just don't want to get into that same situation again. But what we tried to do, and one of the things that I did not see in Veronica's files, typically what we try to do when we're working through that preliminary design is our architect gives us a preliminary cost estimate. I didn't see that. Um, that would have saved this is the third time we've done this? Well, we did CES. And you bid it out, right? So we tried going through CES, um, had the ability to do some, um, scope of work changes at that point. The department, um, didn't want to do that, so that didn't work, went out to bid, no bids. Now we've put it out to bid again and this bid is actually, uh, higher than the CES, uh, proposal. So this is just all the very glaringly obvious signs that we need to go back to the drawing board and we need to look at something that is closer to their budget.
Which would then put us back in, which would then put us back in the realm of CES, right? Potentially?
Potentially, um, but it, it just needs to be redesigned to be closer to that million-dollar budget, not to
Yeah. Thanks for being on that, Veronica and Cheryl.
And where is station number five?
Dos Ciegos.
I'm sorry?
Dos Ciegos.
Dos Ciegos. And what's covering that now?
Uh, one of their other stations, I don't remember the name at, um, and then the town or service city can also respond with their station at the bottom of P.
Well, wasn't part of the whole thing about why they, why we've been focused on doing this station is because some of their coverage is coming from the station that's on Bear Mountain Road? And so you have to go down into town, back out? Maybe I'm wrong about that.
I, that doesn't make any sense. That station is designed to, to, um, be able to support the area at the top of Bear Mountain because of weather challenges during the winter.
Yeah. Okay, obviously, this is for memory.
Yeah, thanks for helping with the memory. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Next, we'll move on to
Excuse me, Shirley?
Oh, sorry.
Remind me where that's located, where this new station will be actually physically located?
Is it at the end of Dos Ciegos?
It's the end of Dos Ciegos.
By Phase One, right? Or farther or way into Dos Ciegos?
I thought it was way into Dos Ciegos, but I can't tell you exactly what lot it's in.
Okay.
So I recall, I remember now some discussion about volunteers being able to get to it.
Right, because of the one way in, one way out.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't have a lot of the background and history. This was approved when, was it here? Um, next, moving on to Grant County Healthcare Claims, Item Q, Consideration of Health Claims for June 2024.
Commissioners, Mr. Chair, we received two claims for the month of June, um, totaling $1,595.95. One was denied for $1,127.95. Um, it'll be run under Medicaid. Um, there's $410.79 disallowed. Um, the amount recommended for payment is $57.21. Stand for any questions?
All good.
Good.
You will have your regular commission reports and also we do have a executive session, uh, scheduled in accordance with NMSA 1978 10151/07, pending a threatened litigation in accordance with, uh, 25 Rodeo Road and also, uh, pending litigation pursuant to Zamora versus Grant County. And that concludes your agenda for Thursday.
Commissioners, any questions on anything? We're gonna we're gonna do that at the end of the month, an executive hospital session at the end of the month, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And we are meeting with the, the board this Thursday, correct, at 4:00? That's it for me.
So Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Edwards, do you have your report?
I'll save mine for Thursday, thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
No, thank you.
And me, I'll save mine till Thursday, so thank you. So Commissioners, anything else? Thank you, meeting adjourned.